The March fourth, twenty twenty four meeting of the City Council for the city of Lake City. Uh, if everyone will understand for the pleasure of leaving and remain standing for the notification.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is right. My heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to meet and conduct the business of our community. We ask for your guidance that what we do is pleasing in your eyes and as for the betterment of our community. We ask for you to look after our citizens, especially uh, White Boozer's family at this time, and our troops and our first responders, and in your name everybody. Amen. At this time, before we move forward, I'd like to do a moment's silence for Assistant Chief Dwight Boozer. Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to tell everybody the viewing will be Tuesday tomorrow night at uh, five to seven at Station One. Uh, the funeral will be Wednesday at eleven at Christian Fellowship Church off two forty. Mr. Jordan again?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mr. Barker?
Present.
Mayor Witt?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Chief Butler?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Lake City Council has opened its public meetings since nineteen sixty-eight, the city council had issued an impression from making personal statements when individuals become adults by addressing the city council. Jailing or making honorable comments found out was inconceivable for the company. Such conduct would not be tolerated. It is only one approved manner of addressing the city council. As we recognize and speak for the community. As a reminder, persons cannot openly tell their hand to the chair, where has been informed by the governing bodies.
Mayor, uh, may I interrupt you right here?
Sure.
Uh, what would happen to a citizen or a council member that violates uh, this paragraph here?
They can be removed.
Uh, also, uh, the key for me doing this every uh, every meeting, I agree with the citizens, is any way that we could make that adjustment, therefore, when you read it, it will speak volumes.
Okay. We will amend that. Uh, that process makes we administer on the January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four workshop and February fifth, twenty twenty-four, at Redwood Station. Is there a motion?
Move to approve, Minister Public.
Thank you. Now, motion on the second, hold on, please, sir.
Alright.
Pose. Uh, next is approval of the agenda. I've been asked to remove item six due to uh, the funeral and that being a fire department item. So with that in hand, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the agenda as amended, all of them, sir.
Alright.
Praise. Okay, the person wishing to address the council, uh, Sylvester Warren.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing me, Sylvester Warren. Um, Mr. Chair, Chair, I need your attention, please. Um, well, I don't know you're listening when people look away. I was told that people aren't paying attention when they're looking away. Um, so if you would give me the same courtesy that you want is to pay attention to me as I try to get this high place. Thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, um, I'm here as a citizen also as a part of the new press, um, Moments of Clarity production in media. Uh, so I'm gonna be also uh, doing press and conducting interviews and things of that nature. But my main reason for standing before you today is to ask that you have an officer to come. I can't approach anymore. Um, for some reason, we used to be able to approach and hand you stuff like this. And the reason that I'm asking an officer to come do this because, believe it or not, I'm more afraid of you all than y'all are of me. Based on the stuff that I'm having, I have to deal with from that side of the dices. Can you please have someone to come and?
Yeah, maybe he wanted to handle it.
Uh, I think he needs to go to uh, Ms. Sykes, but you're an attorney and you got another attorney that you with, y'all can figure it out. Because I hadn't been able to get my uh, packet in for mayor because Ms. Sykes wouldn't take it. Then Mr. Clayton, um, misled me on how he was gonna make sure it got delivered and that didn't work out, so. I wanna make sure that we're gonna get it stamped. Am I gonna be able to get it stamped and get it back tonight? Now, I just turned in my packet to run for mayor. It was, correct me if I'm wrong, and you can ask the uh, city attorney. And he told me that once I give it to the clerk, all she has to do is stamp it and I will get my copy back. And from that point, my campaign can begin. Uh, we've had a hard time being able to connect uh, because of refusal of video and audio to protect me, not being able allowed to be done.
Okay, you'll get stamped coffee tonight.
Oh, what time did I?
After that lady.
Okay, who would I receive it back from? Alright, you're a good man. You're starting to get better, man. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bowden?
Mr. Mayor, I've been about getting six and office desk on large drive. I wanna use my public comments, Mayor, to talk about the issue of the hiring of the city management, using that because I only got three minutes, so I wanna use these three minutes to talk about the comments. Uh, Mr. Mayor, November of this year, um, Ms. Young and uh, Mr. Junior would have been on the city council for two years. Mr. Connor had been on the city council for ten months, and whoever the new mayor would be would be on the council for probably a month. Uh, I tell you to say this, that means that in November, there'll be four members of the city council that will have two years or less on the city council. Therefore, that 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 speaks to a vibe right sort of important right now that the city council making a decision on hiring city manager. Can you imagine? You know, just 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 picture this. You talking about a city council in November, that the most experienced person on the city council be Mr. Hill, and the next most experienced person only have two years. So I think that it's time now for this city council to move as speedy as as expedition as possible and hire a city manager. An interim city manager, interim city manager, interim city manager will carry the same kind of influence, will carry the same kind of weight, and finally, can carry the same same type of respect. So it it is time for us now to stop this experiment and get us a real city manager that's consistent with the charter, that meets those charter requirements, that got a degree and experience, and let's start moving this city forward. Because if we continue down this road now, it will have a problem. Uh, just keep in mind, in November, the most senior member in the city council at that time, conceivably could be Mr. Hill. Everybody's gonna have two years or less. So I can't see a city, our city continuing down this route, the way we going. Not having some professional person with some background in economic development, some background in management of a budget of seventy million dollars or more, some background in in budgeting, some, I mean, just the whole ramble thing. A person also a member of the International City Management Association. That's a benefit, Mayor. And you all have a membership, then you can pick up the phone and call somebody, hey, man, this is so. We got this issue over here, like, oh, man, I know, just if you need to call, it's a person down in Panama said I can send it to you. That's important. So a- as you look through this process, I'll talk about more when you get to that on the agenda. But it's very important, Mayor, to think about what the situation, all y'all think about the situation gonna be eight months from now. Eight months from now, we gonna need somebody in this position that can guide this city, somebody with a vision, can articulate what it is that this council want, and to put it in emotion, but we cannot continue like we doing now. I mean, no disrespect to Mr. Johnson, no disrespect to Mr. Williams, Amy Field, all those people who entered, and even Paul Dow. But anyone outside will tell you that there is no way anybody can can believe that interim or agent is the same as somebody that's in the position. Department heads say what they will, I mean, a person that's that decent manager is decent manager, the president, the interim city manager is the interim city manager. Interim means something, and it certainly doesn't mean as much as being decent manager. I'll talk more about it when we come up again, Mayor.
Thank you. John Cole? You got it?
Good evening. Um, I'm the president of the nonprofit local league called Kids Feeding Kids. Um, we are working to teach our youth to grow, learn how to grow food, and what they grow, they take home to their loved ones and feed their families. This program was started by my father, John Cole, in twenty fourteen at Richardson Middle School. Some of you may remember uh, S. E. Cole's store right there on Railroad and Marion Street for so long, so you might know him from there. But later, he became a teacher at Richardson and C.H.S. The city has always been very important to me and my family. Um, I was born and raised here, and so was my father and my grandfather, and moved on, you know, on down the line. Um, one thing our city lacks here are programs for kids. Um, it lacks a lot more, but I advocate all for the kids. We're wanting to have a way to not only feed the community, but also teach our kids how to self-sustain. And it keeps them off the street, gets them out of trouble if we keep them busy and um, responsible for something like feeding their families. I wanna ask for help for our community. The price of food will be going higher and higher, which will lead to morbid an issue with hunger in the near future. Right now, there's sixteen million kids in the U.S. alone don't have a meal until they get to school. This is a major problem now. We work closely already with D.C.F., United Way, Swan Valley Forests, and other programs by giving away clothes and food to families that are in need. So we see this every day at our thrift store. We are uh, looking for a way to help faster than we are and on a bigger scale, because we feel like the urgency is now. One idea we had is as a possibility, and I'm not sure if you guys do this, but we're looking for like an acre or two of land that maybe the city is not utilizing, that we could use for a community garden. And we're also asking for two hundred thousand dollars to help build a building, that way we can make classrooms for the kids, have after-school programs, weekend programs, which is all free for the kids, and to grow indoor hydroponic systems. That way, we control the environment, to grow food, and as well as outside, uh, having a greenhouse and uh, plants outside. We currently use vertical towers that save space. Um, we can grow twenty plants on one tower, and we have almost a thousand towers already. Um, using hydroponic systems, you use ninety percent less water, and it grows fifty percent faster than a traditional garden. This would be a great opportunity to show your love for your community and help local families in need. Like I said, this program will be free for the kids, there's no charge. We don't make any money off of it, it just, it's there to to teach and to to feed our community. And if you'd like more information on it, I'd be happy to email you information, whatever I have to give you, um, I would, I'd be honored to do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Victor Camacho?
Good evening. My name's Victor Camacho. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'd like to address the ongoing problem with the roosters and chickens in the area of behind Melrose Elementary by the water tower. Uh, I have lived at the same address going on six years now, and uh, this has been a problem since day one. I have tried to, I have called the mayor's office, I have called city manager's office, I have called uh, Mr. Marshall and spoken in like, at at length with Mr. Marshall regarding zoning, uh, zoning violations. And I've been informed that the uh, the the code is, you're allowed to have two or three chickens or something like that, but no roosters. Now, if any of you have ever driven down that area, you will know that there are many, many roosters. And it's to the point where it's unbearable. Uh, it's it uh, it's beyond a nuisance. And not only is it a nuisance, but in the end, it hurts all of us because it brings down property values. And that means if if any of us want to sell our house, we're not gonna be able to, we're not gonna be able to sell it as easily because just the noise alone is enough to 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 discourage any potential buyers. And so lower property value is gonna mean lower tax revenue for the city. And I think that hurts all of us. And not to mention the fact that these are just a handful of people that are just going crazy just having unlimited numbers of chickens. And so I can, I can understand if you want to have two or three chickens and 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 it was to my understanding that this matter was all already brought up before city council, and that the uh, response from city council was that they couldn't do anything as long as, that even though it was a code violation, that the city couldn't step in if they were doing it in their own yard. Well, I am here to tell you, it is not happening in their own yard. It is happening in everybody's yard because the chickens are loose. And I have come to my wit's end because I have exhausted any other method of trying to correct the problem. So I've taken the the problem into my own hands and I've bought, I actually euthanized two chick, two roosters already. And the the situation as it stands has the potential to create confrontations. And I would like to also put that before the city because I don't want confrontations with my neighbors, needlessly. Because I I think that this is a matter that the city could very easily address. Anyway, I would like to leave you, if you will please indulge me. This is at four, six A.M. at my house, on my porch. And you can hear them in the distance, in the foreground, in the background. It does not stop. And this is at dusk and at dawn every day.
Johnson, if you could look into that, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you all.
Okay. Uh, next is approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda. Consent agenda as published.
Second. Motion, second, to approve the consent agenda, all of them, please, sir. Praise. Listen.
Thank you.
Uh, next is discussion, possible action, city manager applicant. Uh, Mr. Bowden, do you want to speak?
There's been nothing new since last meeting. Um, I met your, whatever you all want. I need some guidance on if you need some more assistance from me, if you'd like done. I don't know where you're at in the process. I think you guys were supposed to come back with three of your top candidates, and guessing that's on the agenda at some point, too. And then if you need my assistance with, I don't know if the clerk's office is gonna set up um, interviews, or if you want it to come through H.R., I'm willing to assist in any way that you need, and if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. If I got a question, you can run through that here. Okay, thank you. Uh, I have two people that want to speak, Mr. Warren.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, uh, my comments are similar to uh, Mr. Bowden. Um, I think that um, as usual, y'all have given a agenda packet two or three days um, before Monday, before the meeting. Uh, it seems that y'all do a lousy and horrible job of reading that packet. Because we had the meeting where y'all said y'all gonna have three candidates, and I'm curious as to whether or not y'all have done y'all homework. So we're playing with H.R. time, we're playing with the tax bills, time and money. Have you, Mr. Mayor, or any of the council members, taken upon yourselves and staked out, carved out, your three candidates? Because that's what y'all said y'all gonna do last meeting. And but y'all get upset when people like myself come up into the podium and hold your feet to the fire, hold you accountable. Those are your words. And once again, what I love about these meetings are, they're recorded. You all said that. And so when someone says, Mr. Mayor, that you're lying, they're not calling you a liar. It's a different, that's a label. They're saying that you actually did not tell the truth based on something that we witnessed you to say at the last meeting. And that's what y'all said last meeting. Do we have three names yet, Mr. Mayor?
I do.
Do, does the council do?
Well, I don't know. What, I don't, that would be a violation of such out for me to have asked that before, right?
Yeah, I was wanting to know where we at on the three names, because.
Well, if you're ready to ask, please, then uh.
Well, well, I tell you what, let me, let me sit down. If y'all got three names, then there's no need to be speaking, so we can go through the three names.
Alright.
And if not, I just come back. Thank you.
Mr. Bowden?
But, Mr. Mayor, I was in hope that the council members and yourself, including Mr. Carter, just out there would have three names. This is very important, Mayor. I mean, we've been without a city manager since the hiring of Mr. Affenberg, Mr. Dow. He served as city manager for a brief period of time, but he's interim by the way, he worked as your city manager. Uh, I'm just telling you from a citizen of past number of city councils, someone who worked for current for twenty-four years, ten of our city councilmen. You know, you've got to have a stable position, a stable person in that position. I don't mean stable in terms of, no, it's a stable that's gonna be there, you know you're gonna be there. And I don't see any reason for us to delay this any longer. I think that there's three people that meet those criteria, I think y'all can go through the short list and make a decision, you know, and we need to move forward. One thing I found quite embarrassing, man, somewhat insulting, is during this, during this selection process. Just think about this. We have Mr. Johnson serve as interim city manager. Mr. Johnson didn't even apply for the position. Why? Because he didn't meet the minimum requirements per the charter. I don't think that this city council should ever put itself in that position again. That a person that you appoint somebody to be the interim city manager does not fill the role of the charter. It's no different than the speed sign, that American speed, the speed sign says twenty-five miles an hour. If I'm driving down there at night and nobody on the speed, I can't drive far because nobody's there. The charter says person must have a degree and ten years' experience. We shouldn't, we shouldn't waver from that. We shouldn't waver from that, but you don't have to. And I, and I think that's a mistake for us to continue down this road, and and as long as time now for the city council. Hire somebody to become the city manager, and let's move this city forward. Because a- at this point in time, Mayor, we kinda just in the wind. I said it before and I say it again. The staff of this city is a tremendous staff. I believe that if a person, if 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 Mr. Johnson left the bed and you said, okay, we not gonna place anybody in charge, you have a meeting with department heads, the department head, take care of business, I think the city would still run. I think that the department head gonna do their job, the clerk gonna do her job, the city, they gonna do their job. But we can't continue down this road, Mayor. I'm just telling you that people on the outside looking in, you know, you say that, oh, they talking about how the rules are, I am at the meeting, this is one at the meeting. People have some other conversation about this city council, too. They talking about the lack of leadership, the lack of vision, the lack of understanding. So I'm suggesting that y'all make a decision that, come with the top three, move this thing forward, then ask a public input in terms of where it all fit. I do believe this. I believe at the bottom of my heart that a person need to have some economic development background, he has some experience in in city manager, county manager, former government, and need to bring, bring some ability to the city council to articulate a vision for the city. Not just sitting on this, not just, I need to be a, go out and meet with the public. This is what I'd like to see the city go, per the mayor, per the city council, this is what I'd like the city to go, per the city council, per the mayor. That's what need to happen. And that's the kind of person we need, and I hope that's the kind of person y'all looking for tonight.
Okay. Okay, uh, I have my three, my entry.
Yes, sir.
My, uh, I guess we could pass them to the clerk, if she could count up that. Y'all wanna rank them, or just gonna one, two, three?
Mr. Mayor, I think we should rank, I've ranked mine. I haven't.
I have the first name.
I've got it.
Yeah, hold me.
I'm first and caring.
Okay. Alright, uh, you want me to start?
Uh, Mayor, I think.
I, I, I think we're, we remedied the issue. I think we're on track now.
Yes, yes. As long as we'll have each one of you announce them out loud so everyone can hear your top rankings and in order of one, two, three, that would be great.
Take that number, my top one would get a three, right?
Uh, you, you guys tell me how you want them to rank them.
The top ones, you get a three, your second, two, and one, that's why you should who's pick.
I think maybe the number one is, is number one. Number two is number two.
But then the, that means we're looking at the lowest.
Yeah.
Because if if everybody picked the same person for one, he would only get five points. Somebody picks somebody for three, he can get three rounds back.
I see one, two, and three. Mr. Mayor, are those points?
I'm saying we make up points, that my top one get three points, my second one get two points, the third one get one. Then she counts them all up, see who has the best points.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright. If I could. Mayor, if I, if I could, uh, um, when you say top one, that person is gonna get three points, is that what you're telling me?
Correct. So if all five of us voted for the same person, they get fifteen points. If we all voted for number two, he would get ten points. And if we all voted for the third one, he get five points. And the one with most points, because if I have a one and he has a one, that's three, 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 and one, one, or something like that, then the one with most points.
Now, if, when I interject a little bit, honestly, professionally speaking, you shouldn't be assessing points until you're in an interview process.
Okay.
You can rank them, you don't even have to rank them, you just give your top three.
Okay.
And then you give the, the ones with the, like, you do a tally, whoever comes in with the most tally march with the top three is who you would interview. But you shouldn't be assessing them points until you're in an interview process.
Okay.
Yes, and that's what I was, Mr. Mayor, if I could, and that's where I was going, because I, I personally put them in alphabetical order the way they came.
Okay.
So I could switch that if you wanted to, but I put them.
We just all get the three, that would be.
Yes, sir.
Alright.
If you want me to start it off.
Sure.
Uh, I'll be more than happy.
Mr. Mayor, um, when we're giving our list, are we also allowed to or expected to provide rationale?
I don't know if we did a little something off here.
Mr. Mayor, uh, i- if I may.
Yeah.
Uh, the process that uh, Ms. Bowden just laid out, it would be the one that uh, legal counsel would recommend. And uh, at at this point, it certainly, uh, you know, a council member could say why, but uh, I don't know if it really would affect anything regarding the immediate rankings right now. Because effectively, you're just casting a vote for three individuals, and then we'll see who gets the most votes and second most and so forth to figure out the top three.
Alright, alright, you got it.
Um, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. And uh, first of all, I'd like to thank all of the applicants that put in. However, after reviewing the uh, applications, uh, I came up with the top three. And again, I'm going in alphabetical order. Uh, I got Mr. Gerald Butler, uh, Mr. Juan Guerrero, and Don Rosenthal.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Guerrero, and Mr. Poloski.
Popsky.
Popsky.
Okay. I have Mr. Butler, Mr. Brillhart, Mr. Popsky.
I have Mr. Guerra, Juan Guerra, Gerald Butler, and Don Rosenthal, in that order.
Okay. I have Don Rosenthal, are you ready for me? Don Rosenthal. I have Juan Guerra, and Michael Brillhart. Okay. So we're fine counting right that good. Mr. Rosenthal, four, Mr. Guerrero, four, Mr. Butler, three, Mr. Brillhart, two, and Mr. Popsky, two. Um.
Can you repeat that?
Okay, Mr. Rosenthal had four, Juan Guerra had four, uh, Mr. Butler had three, Mr. Brillhart had two, and Mr. Popsky had two. Uh, we talked last time, and I was in favor of doing some Zoom interviews with the ones that are further away, and and that. Uh, I think Ms. Young thought they all come. Uh, I don't think you about saying any other opinion. How would y'all like to interview? And I think that might make a difference on how we, how many we want to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, I agree with Ms. Young. Uh, I prefer them to interview in person. I went back and watched some previous interviews, the last time we had this process. There were certainly some uh, technical difficulties that made that that uh, difficult at times also. Uh, when it comes to hiring somebody, I think there's a lot that can be uh, learned by looking them in the eyes, shaking their hand. I think there's a lot that can be, uh, learned by looking them in the eyes, shaking their hands, I think that matters. And quite frankly, it's gonna pay well. I think it's the kind of thing that can come in, visit with us more.
Mr. Hill?
Well, I, I agree, I think they should come in, uh, that would, it would give the, give the public a chance to see him, meet him as well.
Okay. All right, uh, my next recommendation would be, we only have five. I'll be asking them to interview. Give them all five a chance. And see if they wanna come, and maybe one or two don't. If we invite all five, am I gonna need any idea on that?
Yes, sir. Um, well, we, we pick three, this is our top three, let's, let's interview those three, we don't need to do five and six. And if we're gonna stick to the format, you said pick the top three, and we will interview those top three. And just like Mr. Uh, uh, Carter Carter and about Ms. Young, um, I think they should come in, uh, that top three, and we interview them.
Okay.
That's it.
I like the idea of interviewing all five. I like that idea.
It's six hundred.
I mean.
And if there's five that actually got votes.
Well, again, I'm, I'm with Mr. John, I think we don't pick the to- top three. So, actually, for dinner, interviewing all five, that's, that's still prolonging this. So I said, we, we said we was gonna do the top three, so I say just do the top three.
All right.
I agree, top three.
Okay, that's three to do. All right, uh, so we're gonna interview the top three, which would be Butler, Guerrero, and Rosenthal. Anybody have ideas when you wanna do this?
It needs to be as soon as possible.
Mr. Mayor, i- i- if I may, given the number of moving parts on this, when we've worked with other cities through this process, at, at this point, once the council has determined what the elements are of the process that they want to see, in other words, having three people, having them all come in, I've heard, uh, have a chance for the community to meet them. That it, it'd be, uh, and if there's anything else like that that you would wanna see as part of the process, that it be turned over to, to staff, uh, to the city clerk, city manager, we, we would work with them as well as need be to, to poll, to find dates that work for the three candidates for the members of the council, and then schedule out the, the candidates to be in the community for two or three days, to, to meet the community, to see the city, to be introduced to all of the city facilities, to meet with council members. And then typically, we, we see those processes, uh, on the final day, roll, roll actually into a, a special call meeting where there actually is a, a vote. You know, it, it may be after they leave, it could be the next day after they leave, but many times we see it roll right into a meeting, uh, on the last day of their visit, so.
We've done it, I believe, after hours, I think we've done it in the morning. What's the pleasure on that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I have a day job, I like the way it doesn't matter to me, one way or the other.
I can make it work.
Make it work, Mayor, please.
So what we could do, maybe, I'd start like at five, that's, for five thirty, and then go an hour each or something, is that about right? I guess everybody could get with Ms. Sykes and kinda give some dates and let staff get with their candidates. See what they're available on, I think they need at least two weeks to make plans to come. And, uh, so if everybody could give us their date, there's something to say, hey, these are bad days, maybe these are good days. And, uh, of course, I always kinda go with off Mondays, uh, most of us have our schedules where that's a free night.
You're like, we ain't had all the money.
All right, uh, please, Bob, do you need any more guidance?
Yes. I, I'm there, man.
I think I'll look at it, you want to get me?
I'm sorry. I was gonna ask them, um, were they anticipating on paying travel expenses, uh, things of that nature, hotel, flight?
They're going to ask those questions.
Yeah, they're gonna ask that.
There's nobody here that needs to fly, because the top three that you have are in, within Florida, so I think they would be driving. But, yes, are you, generally speaking, when you go for any interview, they're not paying your travel and your expenses, it's on your own dime. So I, that's not my decision to make, that would be the council's decision to make.
Uh, when you're talking about executive level professionals of this nature, it, it, and you're narrowing and you're bringing in your top three, it is very common for the municipality to pay the travel expenses of the three candidates. And, and oftentimes for their spouse as well, unless you're gonna bring them back in a second time. But, uh, and, and this may be a reason to, to think about a date other than a Monday, and that is to have them in the community for a couple of, three days. Because I, I, I've seen processes like this where the candidate was interested, but the spouse was not.
Right.
The community wasn't quite what they bargained for, so the spouse actually pulled the, the, the candidate out of the process once they had visited. So you don't wanna bring them back a second time after you've maybe ranked somebody one and have their spouse say, well, wait a minute, not quite my cup of tea for a place I wanna live.
So, hey, y'all ready?
So we, we typically recommend, uh, a, a, at least a two-day, one-night process, if not a, a three-day, two-night process. Where they come in at an afternoon, they spend the night, they spend the day in the city, maybe the Chamber of Commerce tours them around the, the city, gives them an economic development perspective. The, uh, other, other community groups of, of that nature may wanna do the same thing, they may meet with staff, uh, and have senior staff get a chance to talk to them, uh, before they then come in and, and interview with the council on day two or three of the process. So that would throw you, you know, if, if you brought them in on Monday, it'd throw your interview to a Tuesday or a Wednesday kind of thing, as you kind of laid out.
I was gonna, I gotta do it, let you come out on the weekend, and then we have to be Monday night, but I'm good with them coming Monday and then I'll say it'll be on Wednesday or Thursday.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is that process for them to get to know the community, for the community to get to know them, because they've already applied? They're already saying, hey, I wanna work here, and I get what you're saying about the spouse, but they should have thought about that before they applied.
I, I understand, and, and again, just having been through this on multiple occasions with multiple cities, I might say I'm right or wrong, that is just the process that we've seen that most of them use.
I tell you, Bob, we get with Ms. Sykes, give her a Wednesday, Thursday, and let y'all decide what night, it don't matter to me.
Excuse me, Mayor, are you wanting to do, um, are you wanting the candidates to come in? I know the last time we had the main two, Dee helping with this, um, we had the top two last time came in and they actually did a slight tour, a, a small tour with the city departments. They also sat down, we had a big round table with candidates, one-on-one with all the directors, and then we also did a meeting greet. Um, are we planning to do all, is, is your intent that we need to do all of those things before you interview these candidates?
I guess the way we did it last year. I like we did.
And we did cover expenses last time.
Uh, three nights, travel.
Dee, how long do you think it's gonna take to get all that together?
Um, I don't think they decided that they wanted to pay for their state yet, ever decided that.
Personally, I think we should at least, uh, pay for their, uh, state at one of the, uh, local hotels here.
Hold up. I, I, I feel you on the local hotels, but it's one hotel.
I said hotel, I didn't say.
Well, I mean, two, two days, and if y'all think that's sufficient enough, that's fine.
Well, the clerks often just be making all these, I need clerks on that.
Cause they're trying to work.
Let's work together, because I don't know what their availability is going to be, so I'm going to have to.
And when they come in, it's gonna be a, a one, they're gonna come in for these couple of days, they'll get their tour and the interview process all within these couple of days. And so by the end, you will be able to make a decision on who you're selecting, correct?
I would hope so.
Yes.
Also during that time, um, what we did last time was we set up one-on-ones also in the, uh, the conference room. So each candidate also had one-on-one time with each, um, candidate, what was it, about an hour, I believe it was, Mr. Hill, yeah? So each candidate got to spend some one-on-one time before their actual interview in here as well. So there's a lot of things that have to happen before that interview, so it, there's a lot of moving parts that, well, all three have to get together and really coordinate.
Like, just let me know when.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry, I know my order, are we talking about three separate interviews, you're not talking about all three at the same time?
No, three different.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, when, when you talk about bringing a man for an interview, uh, do we have, uh, a set of questions, or we can ask our own questions, but we have?
We used to, we had a set of questions, we all submitted one, two, or three, I forgot, I mean, we all submitted, maybe about eight. I think everybody had about two questions, so it was about ten questions.
That's about right.
And we went, you know, you asked the first one, he asked the next one, I do, and we go around, then we go back in this way. And then if somebody has a burning question, we let them do it.
Thank you, Mayor.
We, there are, there are questions, and, um, that was brought up earlier, whether those questions would be released to the public. My question about that being released to the public, when somebody goes for an interview, it's like a teacher giving an open book test and telling them exactly where to find that answer. I'm not comfortable with giving questions out ahead of time, because then it's giving a disadvantage to, you know, the public, because they need to be, you know, when you go for an interview, you don't know what questions you're gonna get asked, and if you're giving it to them ahead of time. So I do have questions prepared, I haven't shared them with anybody, not even my department. I took them from the last set of questions that you all had and have updated them, so. Um, they're in line with what the mayor said, the number of questions, and there is a scoring system. And then there's another section about presentation and those sorts of things. Um, I recommend that those questions not be given out until they're ready for an interview.
I'm good.
But.
The attorney may have different ideas. The, the, based on everything described, at, at this point, what, what she has would be considered public documents, subject to the public records law. So, uh, i- if someone asks for them, you would have to disclose them, and rather than play that game, I would.
Then why don't we the meeting before they come, we decide how we do the questions, that way it's not, it's not, it's not.
And I would say the, the, the councilman can, or councilors can review the questions, and if you just have some you want to pull off, if you have certain ones you wanna add, you can review them. It, it, uh, it, uh, but it, it is a public document.
Okay.
So.
Okay. I think we got that, we don't discuss it. Uh, we have city council resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two one. Bob, would you read that, Captain?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, before you, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of task assignment four with the Serra Associates LLC for professional services for the reconstruction of existing pavement and stormwater on the northern half of Industrial Loop Road at Lake City Gateway Airport, providing for a total cost not to exceed ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. And providing for an effective date, should the council wish to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one, an appropriate motion would be to adopt said resolution as read by Todd Ollman.
Okay, Mr. One, do you wanna speak today?
Yes, sir, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quickly, ma'am, Sylvester One, I, I noticed that the mayor, I'm not, I'm sorry, no, the city attorney, uh, is quoting the, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, the, uh, one-nineteen statute, uh, as relates to public records. It, it's funny how the city attorney begins to, begins to talk about the one-nineteen public record request, and it begins to resonate with staff and council members and mayor.
Okay, we need to talk about this, right?
Yeah, but, Mayor, this, this is my three minutes. No, 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 Mayor, I, I asked when I came up, with all due respect, I said, thank you, sir. So now, to get to my point, I have made the one-nineteen statute very clear to y'all, and y'all still have not abided by it, that's what I wanted to say. But y'all have abided by it when he calls for it, but when I actually paid twenty-four hundred dollars from it, I hadn't benefited from it. And nobody seems to care about that, but it'd be a judgment day for that. Now, my question as relates to the topic, ma'am, Mr. Mayor, if that was so pleased, Mr. Chair. We're doing a reconstruction of ninety-eight hundred dollars for, um, the airport, where we getting that money from? If you mind, is there a grant, or are we pulling it from some fund, is there some kind of fund already allocated for it? And the reason I ask that, ma'am, before everybody get our answer and begin to answer, is because I wanna say that, um, Ms. Goggins, um, educated our community. First lady, very well-known church in our community, her husband was educated, great work. I've seen her come down here when she shouldn't have to countless times about her road being paved. And if we can find money for the airport, uh, we can, uh, attempt to find money for a hundred-foot truck ladder. A hundred-foot truck ladder that nobody other than some folks, maybe one or two people out on West Ninety would need. I think we can find some money to pave Camp Street. I really do, Mayor. And if we're gonna make motions to pave one area, we need to be finding money to pave other areas. So I don't think she should get overlooked, I don't think her community should get overlooked.
Thank you.
That road is horrible.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, very few people use that airport. A lot of people use Camp Street, thank you.
Uh, is there a motion as to the city council resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two one?
Mr. Mayor, make the most improved resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two one. Second.
Motion out of sector, and your discussion.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, if I could, uh, y- y- you know, s- some things people, uh, come up and, and, uh, it's, it's, it's the truth. And I, I would love to see Camp Street paved. And when people come up and speak, they're telling the truth about that particular street. Of course, uh, I've talked to, uh, county commissioners about it, uh, I had a chance to talk to Dee Johnson, and I actually had a chance to call the first lady, which is, uh, uh, the mother of the church, uh, my, 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 my pastor at that. Uh, I had a chance to talk with her, and, uh, she is highly, highly, uh, uh, I put that adjective out there, uh, arrayed about, uh, not getting that street paved, and it was in, uh, line with getting it paved. So, um, and if we can find money to, uh, to pave the airport, and I know they get different grants and sc- you know, I, I know that. But we have to find some money, some kind of way, to help pave that Camp Street. I think she's had some damage to her car, uh, y- y- you know, so let's do what we can. Mr. Johnson, I, I know you, you, you wanna talk about this, and I don't mind. However, uh, we, we, we've done too much talking, and now it's time to take some action on Camp Street. Go ahead.
So is the request for council, y'all want us to move some money, combat prices, and start paving Camp Street? I would think that the proper thing we need to do is follow the protocol and make sure that the infrastructure under the road is fixed before we start doing some pavings. Um, and for the record, the question came up, these funds were given through the DLT, so they have to be allocated at the airport. Um, Ms. Goggins has made Camp Street very, she made me very aware of it. And we did say that was next on the list. Um, usually with bigger road projects like this, we reach out and look for grants, but if it's the wishes of the council to find some money and house to do this, but it is in the process of going through the grant process right now.
See what you can do with the grants, see what it would cost, and, and infrastructure and all that, and let's pay, uh, vet it, and do it the right way, they do it, as quickly as they can.
Sounds good. For the record, Mr. Johnson, these funds are from, uh, the grant fund, right? For the map room. Yes.
Anything else besides we talk about?
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Darbigan?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mayor, what?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Johnigan mentioned something, mostly about actually, Mr. Johnigan?
On the, uh, workshop, uh, I wanted to, uh, to, uh, make a motion to postpone this until we get a.
until we get a, uh, a city manager. Uh, because this is one of those topics where we're gonna need a, um, city manager to help us, uh, make, uh, these decisions. So if, if I could, I'd like to make that motion that we move, we table, uh, the workshop and wait until we get a, uh, a city manager in.
There's something.
Mr. Mayor, can we speak on this? But this ain't on the agenda. We know this is gonna be a question.
Right, I won't let you speak, but I'll see if there's even a second for it. Anybody got a second? I guess we had the workshop. All right, come at your council. Everybody should do a journey.
So move, Mayor.
All right.
Thank you.